Mr. Rashad Ropel, please.
Mr. Arico?
Here.
Mrs. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Shi?
Here.
Mrs. Maroni?
Here.
Mrs. Pang?
Here.
Dr. Chen?
Here.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Wodowski?
Here.
Mrs. Maddison?
Here.
All present. Thank you. Good to see everyone again. Two meetings in a row. I like it. Opening statement: The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Edison Board of Education has cause notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News and Tribune and the Star-Ledger on September 22, 2020. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and applicable state regulations. Okay. At this time, we're going to have public comments of six minutes, only on the resolutions, only. Resolutions only. And when you come up, the next person that speaks after the first person, we have the wipes here, the garbage pail right here. So if you would like to wipe down the stand and the microphone, feel free, so we stay healthy. So at this time, resolution comments only, and the board will have comments later. Any public comments on resolutions? Mr. Baker, you want to go first, sir? Yeah, go ahead. Settle last. Uh-oh. Work injury?
No. Good evening, members of the board. Brett Baker, 140 Grandview Avenue. I'll kick things off.
Thank you.
I know I pushed the board to table the resolution on the superintendent's contract, Resolution 52F. And would just like to stand here again, one, to reiterate, like I said last week, my utmost confidence in the superintendent's performance as a superintendent. I think the work he's doing, we've launched seemingly successfully. I know there's been some hiccups for transportation and things like that. But would just like to come with hopefully some, you know, solutions and alternatives to not voting for an extension at this time. I would like to encourage the board to consider, you know, I don't know if we've got a mid-year coming up or we've got goals to reevaluate, or anything like that, that we could really base this against. It does feel rushed. It does feel... I don't disagree with the urgency. And I'm a firm, firm, firm believer that everybody, everybody, from our custodians to our superintendents, deserve sound job security at all times. They deserve to wake up in the morning, put their shoes on, appreciate where they work, love where they work, and love to have that job security. I just do not agree that right now is the time that we should be having that conversation. And would just encourage the board to reconsider what the image of that looks like and the message that it's sending. The conversations should be had around student education and performance and the structures in this, just this new world. And as an educator myself, to implore to all of the current and former educators that sit on the board, what would you do if somebody sat across from you and wanted or asked, and Dr. Bragan, I'm not saying you're asking for this, but, you know, we would truly question, like, are you in this for the kids? Are you in this for the parents? And I'm not saying the hearts or minds are not in that place. I'm just questioning, why now? Why not later? Why does it have to be now? I must have missed it, but I was surprised when we tabled it. It came back up for today. But would strongly encourage, I'm not saying wait till after the elections. I'm saying wait till a normal time in the structure of the evaluation of Edison Public Schools as superintendent, to truly say, hey, here's your report card. It's the same, right? Quarter one's coming up for this district. Same conversation we have with kids. Here's where you're doing. Here's where you can improve. Here's the support we're going to give you. Here's the future we see for you. Let's have the same conversation. Let's afford Dr. Bragan that same conversation at times that exist within our already existing structures. It's a mid-year evaluation and an end-of-year evaluation. So I encourage the board to table indefinitely until such time that the board sees it time to come up for performance review again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Yash Pandya, 20 Arbor Circle. So first of all, I'd just like to congratulate you, President Ralph Arico, Dr. Bragan, and the rest of the board members for having a successful two days of reopening our schools. And I would like to bring up the point regarding extension of our superintendent's contract. Ultimately, the decision is all upon you as board members, but I'd like to bring up a few facts. One of the facts being, under Dr. Bragan's leadership, we were able to have a successful two-days reopening despite the pandemic. And I think that's a big leap forward, seeing our students back in our schools, being safe, and being active again. The other piece is also, we're able to see such large savings with Lincoln. One of the biggest problems we face in our school district is overcrowding. And Dr. Bragan, under his leadership, we're able to see the savings. And in fact, we're able to see millions of dollars' worth of savings. And I've seen parents and students talk to me, and they've shared with me, that they're happy. They're happy to be back in schools. And I just want to thank Dr. Bragan for his leadership. And at the end of the day, these are just facts which I feel are out there, and the decision is on the board. So thank you for the time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You're next. Yes, you can. And he just wiped it down, so. You could.
Good evening, everyone. Esteban Galtas, 33 Wiltuma Avenue. I'm the proud father of two children in the school system and the proud husband of Roseanne Galtas, who spoke here last week, as many did and weren't given the respect they deserved when pleading their case for Dr. Bragan's extension. I watched the meeting remotely because my daughter had a game, and I can say I was truly disgusted. Mr. Shi, my parents are immigrants. Taught me that when someone is speaking to you, you give them the respect and attention that you look them in the face, unlike what you did to my wife and others last week. So I hope I have your attention tonight. My wife works very hard as the PTO president for James Monroe. I've never heard her mention ever that there was a superintendent that was so involved as Dr. Bragan. It made her very happy and wanting to do more for the kids. You're probably saying, who is this guy? I'm the silent majority. The silent majority who was born here, went to school here, played sports here, got married and raised kids here. It makes me so proud that someone from South Side of Edison has come back to give to the district and my kids. Thank you, Mr. Bragan. A five-year contract is industry standard for superintendents. I know this well because my father spent 30 years working on the Board of Education in Hudson County. Due to political reasons, Dr. Bragan was only offered a three-and-a-half-year contract upon being hired. Despite this, he took the job anyway so he can return to his hometown and lead our district. Unlike anyone you know or I know that has ever held this position as superintendent, he made serious challenges out the gate. Excuse me. He had to deal with the COVID-19 pandemic and how that affects our kids. Dr. Bragan stepped up during these difficult times and proved that he wouldn't fold like a cheap suit. Instead, he focused on how to get our kids back in school where they belong safely. We've gone two days now with that. This didn't happen overnight. It took extensive time, which took away from what his real plans really were for our kids and the district. Thank you, Dr. Bragan, again. I've seen Dr. Bragan at high school games, attending and cheering on our children. It makes me feel good. I can't really say I've seen that from the past regime. He really does care. I honestly believe that under the current circumstances that I've mentioned, Dr. Bragan deserves this extension. What do we have to lose to give him the extension? Can anyone answer that tonight?
We're going to have public...
That's fine. I figured, you know, I'd throw it out there. Why would anybody on the board member not support this? I know if his role, the roles were reversed and any of you were sitting in this position, he would do what was right and vote yes for the extension. All I can say is give the man a fair shot. Prove himself. Let's vote today, not next week or when the election is over, but today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, ma'am. I apologize if I don't recognize you with the mask on.
I don't recognize myself with a mask on. My name's Emma Lynn Lovkler, 6 Nancy Circle, Edison. Good evening. I usually don't watch the Edison Live stuff. I don't watch Board of Education meetings. I just random, I know, right? I randomly turned it on last week and was completely horrified and disgusted with what I saw.
Speak closer to the mic. Yeah. There you go. Or push it, pull it down.
Can I have, like, a block to stand on?
You can pull it down a little bit.
That's no fun.
There you go. Perfect.
I was horrified and disgusted with what I saw. As I've come to understand the situation, Dr. Bragan was offered a three-and-a-half-year contract at the outset of his employment, which he took, yay, but the industry standard is a five-year contract. Why was that even offered? And I'm not asking questions. They're always terrible. Superintendents can't achieve tenure. Their continued employment is never guaranteed. However, the state of New Jersey sets term limits for superintendents at five years, and that's because it takes time to institute and evaluate any substantial changes that a superintendent wants to oversee. Another reason why the five-year term is important is it helps the superintendent stay above the politics of the school board. School board members rotate through every three years. Every year, there's an election for a school board. These members change. We have to have stability in the superintendent for the five years to have some overarching say there in what happens. In the past year, Dr. Bragan and all superintendents have been focused almost exclusively on the COVID-19 pandemic. It's the responsibility of the school board to find, recommend, and hire a district superintendent. After that's done, it is the board's responsibility to support the policies that he brings forth. What has this board done collectively and individually to support the success of Dr. Bragan implementing his district goals in the past year? What do we have to lose with this two-year extension? And why would any board member who's actually here for the betterment of the district and our students not support this? So, there was a proposal made to table this whole conversation until after school had opened. So we're here to talk. You choose to table the discussion again, it seems like it's almost a political maneuver. The school board is not a political organization. The board is here to support policies recommended by the superintendent, not play politics. Dr. Bragan has been a great superintendent. Thank you. He communicates with parents. He has actually shown up at school events to support the students of the district. Dr. Bragan walks the walk. He cares about the students' education. Isn't that why we hired him? Dr. Bragan deserves to be given the opportunity afforded to superintendents across the state in the first place, not piecemeal. Please, put the students first. Be the board that puts the students first and allow the extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on resolutions only? Paul Arena back. Just wipe that mic right there.
Hello, Mansi Mathur, 1 Lombardi Street. Today again, I'm here, like last week, to support Dr. Bragan and his extension. He's not asking for any bigger salary or perks. I think just to give him a little bit more time to execute his vision is completely fair. In my experience with our district, what we need is what he is right now. He's been very responsive to our needs that we, that at this trying time that we are facing right now. Also, we need stability and continuity. We can move forward together, especially during this uncertain time, if by giving him some extension, if he can bring some stability to our district. And last but not the least, I urge the board to at least consider his extension. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You have your hand up? Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening. Wipe that mic off if you like.
Absolutely. My name is Patricia Bueno, 35 Raymond Street, Edison, New Jersey. I was here last week to support Dr. Bragan, and I continue to do that. Before I start thinking too much and get myself all nerve-wracked, I've been in front of this board before. Okay, I'll be honest. I haven't been pleased with the body language from the board in the past, and we're not here for that tonight. I am here to ask that my community stand together to support a good man for the job. How did we not initially sign a five-year contract? This board set precedent. Do we know what that is? You set precedent with every other superintendent, five-year contract. I think that's a fair suggestion. I personally, because of what I've seen in Dr. Bragan, I support Edison High School. My son attends. My daughter graduated in '11. I attended Edison South Side all the way up through high school. I give back to my community, and I'm afforded that chance. I love my community. And I would like to see Dr. Bragan not just remain where he's at, but give the fair five-year superintendent contract, plus one for COVID. Because if we're here to discuss it, let's really discuss what's appropriate. I think that's fair. So does the board have any questions for me? None? Okay. You have my address.
Thank you very much. Mr. De Pasquale. That face I recognize.
Tony De Pasquale, 2 Pine Street. So I just want to read a few things to you. So first, a question. What does it mean to have stability? The quality state or degree of being stable, such as the strength to stand or endure. Firmness. What does it mean to have lack of stability? To be unstable is to lack stability, meaning things could change without warning, like an unstable bookshelf that's likely to fall down. What we need over the next few years in Edison is stability. You know, I've heard so many things about our former superintendent, how things were so bad with him. You know, things weren't stable, things were, and then we had a, you know, two-year of no superintendent. Things weren't stable for many years. Now we have a pandemic. Things aren't stable again. What we need in this school district is we need stability. And what gives the stability to a school district? What gives us the vision of what our school district needs? That's the superintendent. It comes from the top down. If we have a stable person that has a five-year contract that can bring across a vision to the school district, that's what we need in Edison. Stability will affect the kids, the parents, the taxpayers, the town. We have so many unstable issues right now in this world and in this town. We need to seek to have stability. And if this is just, you know, extending a contract for a few more years, what does that hurt? And you know, I go against the argument of, well, we're ignoring the kids because we are worried about a contract. But doesn't the superintendent affect the kids directly? How can this be that we are hurting and not caring about the kids when it's the person at the top that ultimately affects the children? So I really think you need to consider this seriously. And just think about that word, stability. What is that going to do for our kids? Is having somebody who will be here for the next few years that will have a vision for the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Pasquale. Any more hands on resolutions only? Yes, ma'am. You actually match. I like it, the yellow mask.
I do that on purpose.
Styling.
It's a work thing. Okay, so I'm Tina Lappalosa, 66 Ellen Street. I was also here last week in support of Dr. Bragan, and once again, I am here again in support of Dr. Bragan. I just want to say that everyone that spoke tonight had many of the areas that I was also going to speak about. So I'm just going to be very brief and say, someone said that we should table this indefinitely. Does that mean it goes away? I'm not so sure. So I think if it doesn't go away and we keep Dr. Bragan where he is, we need to vote tonight. And why do we need to vote tonight? Because we cannot leave our children's future in limbo. We elected this Board of Ed to do the right thing by our children, by the parents, by the teachers, everybody in this township that depends on all of you. I know last week I said that I wasn't getting looked at, and I was very upset by that because I feel like you need to pay attention to everyone that comes here. We elected you. So what I'm asking now is it's time for the board to do so. You guys voted Dr. Bragan in. We need to decide his future tonight. It can't wait. This is ridiculous. This is, this gentleman's livelihood in the air every day, as well as our children. They come to school every day. We said, oh, yes, the schools opened two days perfectly, but that's not true. The schools have been open. The special needs kids have been coming to school the entire school year with no issues. So if you were going to have issues, it would potentially be with the kids that can't always follow the specific guidelines for infection control. So he's been doing a good job much longer than the two days of the reopening. It's been the entire school year. And yes, the kids want to be back in school. My child's a senior. He wants to be here. You would think every senior wants to be home on their computer, where they are most of the time anyway, after hours. But no, he wants to be here. So we need to vote and decide Dr. Bragan's future tonight. And we, the citizens of Edison, will vote and decide the future of the Board of Education in two weeks when we also vote. So please, do the right thing tonight, and then we can also do the right thing in two weeks.
Thank you.
Anthony Di Amrin, 15 Rodak Circle. Beth Maroni, last week, brought up an interesting quote or statement, and it was very telling. Beth Maroni's been in education for a long time. She's been a two-term board member. She's out, she's on her way out, not seeking reelection. And when she speaks the words that she spoke last week, she is telling you, telling us all that now is the time. Now is the time. Let me also state, when the council president, in January, became council president, she wouldn't, she was, she was lobbied hard from behind, and she told for control. And what she said to those people, no, I'm going to be my own woman, independent, they came after her hard. They did. They called it the nastiest things. That's what happens in this town. They try to control a lot of our elected officials. Dr. Bragan is not elected. There's an election here every year for three seats. And for stability, for stability, the only thing that he can rely on is a contract. If we're going to make him elected, then we should, if this, if it's going to be a political process, then we should be able to elect a superintendent, but that would be a disaster, a disaster. The only way to protect him is through a contract. That is it.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. All right. Thank you.
No, it's all right. No, it's all right. And that's what Dr. Bragan is. Dr. Bragan is not going to be controlled. He's an independent thinker. And for some board members up here, for, to not to see that, it's quite astonishing. It really is. It's quite astonishing. The contract itself is the leverage. With a Board of Education with three possible new members each year, he needs to be removed from the political process. That is the key. He should not be a part of the political process. The only way to do that is through a contract. And if we're going to allow this to be a political process, then we should just elect the superintendent. But again, that would be a disaster. Beth Maroni said it perfectly. Now is the time. She has nothing to gain from that. She's telling us something. Why is she telling us this? She knows. She knows. I don't know what you guys are going to decide, but shame on you if the rest of you can't see it. Some of you can't see it. Because most of us can see it up here. Dr. Bragan, great work. I don't know what they're going to decide on. I want to congratulate you on the first couple of days in the reopening. And I hear from parents, students, from teachers. Keep up the good work. I honestly, I, sometimes I shake my head on why, why somebody would even want to come here and deal with this. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Mine's very simple. It's very short. Before Dr. Bragan got here...
Name and address, I'm sorry.
Before Dr. Bragan got here...
Name and address, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Bennett Taub, 20 Redwood Avenue, Edison.
Thank you.
Before Dr. Bragan got here, we talked about stability. There was no stability. Then the pandemic hit, and he was the only one who actually showed some stability in being a rock during the whole thing and being available to all the parents and everybody. And not everybody was happy all the time. That's part of it. But the man stood up. He stood up like a rock, and he stood up to everybody and is doing the best he can. And for you guys to put this on him now at this time is, is just, you know, ridiculous. And put your own personal agendas aside for once and do the right thing for the kids of Edison. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Garbage Keller here, if you want. Anyone else on resolutions only? Yes, sir.
Rich Lappalosa, Edison, New Jersey. Business owner. Well, you've heard it all tonight. Everything that was said was what I was going to say. And if the board doesn't support what's happening, what everybody's got to say about Dr. Bragan, this is a problem. If we can't solve that problem now, are we ever going to solve the problem? Because we don't want a puppet on the board. We've had puppets. We want somebody that knows what's going on. And obviously, everybody knows what's going on. Everybody loves them. Why, why are we even talking about this? I get angry because this is all stupid, in my opinion. There's better things to do. There's much more important things to do. Children are involved. Not this crap. There shouldn't even be a thought in anybody's mind. The man was hired. Let him do his freaking job. Simple. That ain't hard. Why do you want him out? Baloney. Baloney. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Wendellin Castles, 575 Old Post Road.
Hi, Ms. Castles. I didn't recognize you.
Yes. I wasn't going to speak. I was just going to sit and listen.
Just pull down that mic a little bit so we can hear you. Thank you.
I really wasn't going to speak. I was going to sit and listen. But I graduated Edison. I graduated college, came back and taught my own community. I now have a child in the district. Everybody talks about making things consistent. If you give the kids consistency, you give them normalcy. It's a new normal. Give them consistency. They know what's going on. Not, everything's changing so much for these kids. Stop. He came from this community. He knows these kids. They say take pride in the fact that they're half someone that came back and was successful. What benefit do you have from changing things for these kids in a time where everything, for parents, businesses, students, athletes, they deal with change on an everyday basis? Give them some consistency. Give the contract to them. It doesn't benefit anyone for change, especially when there's no negatives. It's a positive. So when you think about what to vote, think about the kids, not the politics, not the gossip, whatever's going on. Think about the neighbors, the kids you see on the baseball field, the students that walk this hallway. I hope that you would vote for this contract because this is for the students, not for political gain, not for anyone's ego. It's for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
How are you? Brian Rivera, Edison, Stony Road. I've been out of the loop for a while for some personal business and stuff that's been going on with my family, but I'm just piggybacking on what I'm hearing about a contract. I've been an administrator for 12 years, a teacher for eight, so in the game for about 21 years. I worked in districts where I've had seven superintendents, about 60 administrators, and I saw how ineffective that's been. So I am concerned doing the fact that we are in COVID right now and this isn't going away tomorrow. It's not going away next month. We probably have another year and a half of this. On the fact that we're going to lose a lot of money probably over budget shortfall because tax revenues and everything is going to be horrible. So if we have someone that's here that's knowledgeable about what's going on, why are we going to risk losing him? You're hearing this from an experienced administrator. If you don't have stability, you don't have somebody that you can rely on, it's S Creek down the hill. So congratulations. I didn't even know that this was going on because I've been out of the game. I hope you get it. I think you deserve it. You work hard. Like I said, I've worked with seven superintendents. I've seen one superintendent actually go to games, speak to parents, is visible. And you've done that all in a year, in the 21 years I've been in this game. So kudos to you. God bless. I hope you get what you deserve.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, public portion is closed. All right, now what we're going to do is vote on the resolutions, the board. Board, we're going to go by number and letter or whatever. And if we have comments, feel free. Okay? So the first vote is going to be on number five. I guess that's, let me put my glasses on. IA Personnel Labor Relations Report only we're voting on right now. So if I could have a motion.
Motion.
Ms. Matiker? Thank you. Mr. Shi? Any comments from the board on personnel report? Okay. Roll call, please. Ms. Matiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
I'd like to table the superintendent.
We're not on that. We're on personnel.
Okay. Uh, yes, for the.
Yeah, just the Labor Relations Report, Ms. Chen. Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Ms. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Arico?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay, now we're on number, double I, I guess. A, B, C, D, E, N, F. Comments? Discussion? Yes, Ms. Maroni.
I might be a little lengthy, but hang on. My father was Jay Daffelman, who was a renowned football coach and track coach in Highland Park. He was the athletic director there for well over 25 years. He spent 47 years in Highland Park as a devoted teacher, coach, and athletic director. When he first came to Highland Park, the superintendent was a guy named Dr. McKenzie. And aside from Austin Gums, who became superintendent a little later on, my father saying about superintendents was, ah, superintendents, I've seen them come, I've seen them go, I'll see them come, and I'll see them go. I was hired in Bridgewater Raritan to teach on February 1st, 1972. I was hired by a superintendent who had been there a very long time and was a great man. He retired at the end of my first year. And I was in Bridgewater Raritan for 14 years. Every 18 months, we had a new superintendent. And I could tell you stories about the ridiculousness of the superintendents. Everybody came in with a new idea. And I called these guys two things because we didn't ever have a woman. They were pretty boys and they were climbers. And they came to Bridgewater Raritan because they wanted to go to the next big step. They were very well-broomed, you know, nice-looking men, but not much in the way of good administrators. Why this board only gave Dr. Bragan a three-and-a-half-year contract? I think some, some of you may sympathize a little bit with us when you understand we were coming off of the O'Malley regime and we were nervous about giving a new superintendent a five-year contract. So that's the deal on that. I know if I had it to do over, my feelings would be different for sure. But we were, we were unsure at the moment and that's why that happened. And now I want to tell you that when we did finally open the search, I don't know why we waited a year and a half to open a search. It should have been opened immediately, but I think it had something to do with who was running the board at the time. So it was a two-year delay, which was god-awful because the people that we had in didn't know Edison, didn't care about Edison. They were in it for the money. And so what happened? We didn't get any additions built. We didn't move forward at all. Nothing happened. We were stagnant. We got, when we opened the job, we got, oh, I don't know how many applications, but it was quite a few. And here's the, the bottom line. Most of them were awful and most of them were not qualified to work in Edison. Would you want a superintendent from Texas here or from Canada here? What do they know about Edison? People, and most of you who spoke, many of you who spoke, came through the Edison system. You know what it means to work in your hometown. You have a vested interest in your hometown. It's just the way it is. Your roots are very deep. And I know a lot of you here feel that and understand that. My roots in Highland Park are very deep where I grew up. It's, it's just the nature of the way things are. I think it would be a very big mistake not to extend the contract at this point because I, I wouldn't want to see the board have to go through the whole process all over again. There's nothing to say Dr. Bragan will want to stay after three and a half years of, of some of the things that happened here. But he's a very brave man and I think we'd be very foolish if we did not extend the contract. Thank you.
Dr. Chen?
You want to speak? Yeah. So first of all, I work in a private sector. So, so from, from my.
You can pull your mask down if it's better.
So from my experience, we don't consider an employee for promotion or rotation or award or anything until that employee have, have been hired for a whole year. So Dr. Bragan, I agree that he has done a great job since he was hired, but it's not even a full year yet. He, he was here December last year. So, so why hurry? Why, why shouldn't we give some more time to fully evaluate? And, and also, his contract is not going to expire next year or in two years. Actually, it's going to expire in, in 2023. So from here to 2023 is more than two and a half years. So why are you so hurry for, for this one or two months? And people keep saying that it's about kids, it's not about politics. But I keep hearing people say, oh, the election is in two weeks. So why do you care? If you are, if you, who are thinking about more politics than I do? I, I care more about the timing. So I, I wanted him to be employed for a full year so we can evaluate him better. And also, I, I want to, because we, our school is just open and, and there's a lot of things going on. So I wanted our situation to be a little bit more stable. So let's, I'm, I'm not saying that I'm going to like, like terminate his term. Anyways, his term is longer than mine, so.
Thank you, Dr. Chen. All right, excuse me, excuse me. Public comment is over. Public comment is over. I'm sorry. You can come back later during public comment. Oh, no, sorry. Sorry, no, 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 sorry. Sorry. Thank you. Ms. Podolsky?
I am going to have to pull the mask down. I have been around, worked for, worked with superintendents of schools for over 60 years. Superintendents, assistant superintendents, acting superintendents, interim superintendents, assistants to the superintendent, all here in Edison. And in these years, I have seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. I have a pretty good idea of what a good superintendent of schools looks like and sounds like and what one does not. We definitely have a keeper here in Bernie. Now, back when you senior members of the board were hiring him, I was just a candidate and a member-elect and as such, had absolutely no input in his hiring. So no information on his background, experience, or track record. I do, however, know how to do my own independent research and I did. I found that he had worked as a superintendent in a small district that I was very familiar with. And I did some digging. There was nothing wrong with him. But I wasn't sure if experience in Hazlet really qualified him for Edison. I also taught at Monmouth University, as he did. It's a lovely school. But did it qualify him for Edison? I joined the board in January. Bernie got hired and invited me to sit down in his office on December 31st to meet. I liked what he had to say and where he was coming from. He dug right in and started to fix some major issues our district was facing. Meeting with people, listening to their concerns, explaining some of the constraints we have in terms of addressing some of them. He made himself visible, approachable, and followed through on many issues. Then came COVID. I do not know where that we or the children of Edison would be if we had not had Bernie. His background in Edison, his love of Edison, along with his knowledge, experience, and intelligence, helped him get things done. Many things happened for our students, made things happen for our students. It has been a rough road and Bernie has been there every step of the way, working to make it the best situation possible for the children of Edison. After the vote, there may be substantive, substantive changes going forward. We will either still have Bernie or be looking for a new superintendent. And we all know how well traditionally Edison does that. We will definitely be paying a superintendent, one way or the other, a competitive salary commensurate with the demands of a district of our size, size, and stature. We will face the challenges of the pandemic, which demand the skills we have seen in Dr. Bragan. And we will need a strong, dynamic, and highly effective leader on the job as soon as possible. We have one right here already. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Podolsky. Mr. Shi?
Yes. I just want to say that I have spent more time than any board member sitting out here and the board member who had left the board to get Dr. Bragan into this district. I spent the most time and most effort to get him in. Even the last day of his appointment.
Please let the board member speak.
As a board president, that was my job. So even the last day of the appointment, we hit a glitch at the state, right? So a lot of board member knew. That entire day, of course, just to make sure that we can appoint him that day. We want him to be successful. His success is a successful district and the district's success is a success for our students. We want all our students to be successful. Bernie has done a great job coming to the district. The pandemic, nobody can expect. If you want to find a leader, you, you know, if you want to find a good captain, you run the ship during the storm. A good captain is, you can't find a good captain when the storm is, when the, when the smooth. Dr. Bragan has done that. And for a lot of folks who has came to the podium, the word vision was mentioned a lot of times. Vision, the vision for the district, okay? We want to see a vision for the district. In the recent rating, two of our 19 schools was rated three out of 10. That's Ben Franklin and Monroe. Three of our schools were rated five out of 10. That's Edison High, TJ, and Lindonelle. Lindonelle moved up from last year. We want to see a vision, how we'll continue to move the district forward, how we can move these schools rating up. That impacts our property value. The next item is the overcrowding. We all know that the district is overcrowded, right? The overcrowding is not going away. Did not go away. We just built the, the Lincoln School is, is planned to be built. We have a lot of overcrowding in our high schools. Edison High School, JP Stevens High School is about 500 seats short right now. The five-year projection is 960 seats and the 10-year projection is about 1,000 seats. Edison High, we are about 100 seats short. Five-year projection is 370 seats short. A 10-year projection is 480, somewhere around 500. All these needs to be addressed and we need a plan. The, to, how to implement these plans, it's probably going to take a long time. Probably be two years, three years, or maybe five years. But coming up with this plan and coming up with this vision does not need that long. So what I'm looking for is a vision and a plan for the district. With that said, a lot of folks has mentioned about the timing. I don't think right now is the time to renew the contract.
Let Mr. Shi finish. Thank you. Everyone, please. Thank you. Uh, excuse me. Excuse me.
Right now is not a good time for the renewal. Right now is not a good time for the renewal. I just want to put on the record, not one single board member has ever talked about terminating his contract. Not one board member has ever talked about firing him. Dr. Bragan is guaranteed for his job until June 30th, 2023. We want him to be successful. We want him to, we want to work with him. We want the best of our district and the best of our students. With that, I will propose to table this resolution.
Okay. All right, we've not finished. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Thank you. Any more board comments? Nope, thank you. Well, Mrs. Conway.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle.
Mrs. Conway should not participate in the discussion.
I will anyway. I know I just got yelled at, but guess what?
Got yelled? Advice?
Never stopped me before. I have been told that I'm not allowed to be involved in the decision-making of whether to extend Dr. Bragan's contract. I was not able to vote initially for Dr. Bragan. As a board member, that's one part of my job that I have been not doing. But considering what board members do, I feel that I have been a qualified part of the board. The only thing that concerns me tonight, and I will not say whether I'm pro or con, is that this district needs to move forward in a positive direction regardless if we extend his contract or we don't. We need the public to be behind Dr. Bragan regardless if the vote goes yes or no. We may not agree with one another. You may not agree with the person sitting in front of you or next to you. But the one thing that we should all agree is that we need to get behind Dr. Bragan regardless of, no matter how long he'll be here. He has positive things that he would like to move forward to doing, whether it's for another two and a half years, or three and a half years, or four and a half years, or 12 years. So I ask that regardless of what this outcome is, and I don't know what the outcome will be, and I don't think I'm influencing anyone by what I'm saying, but I want you to understand we will go forward positive regardless of what the outcome would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conway. And I just wanted to let Mrs. Conway know, she's a very integral part of this board in every aspect. We've spoken about many things, many times, even though she's not eligible to vote on this particular contract, but she does make sure she gets her word in and say an opinion.
Whether you like it or not.
Absolutely. And at any time during the day and night, my phone rings.
Dr. Bragan, that test to that.
Yeah, can you give me a call? I love those texts. Okay, anyone else? Mrs. Pang?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to all the parents that comes here and make a statement today. I know you must have truly believed in Dr. Bragan, otherwise you wouldn't spend time here and give us your opinion. I have always been supporting Dr. Bragan since the very beginning. I was one of the vote that supported him to become the superintendent in this district. But the more I see this, I've, you guys have seen that this is not about politics, but look at the timing that when this happens and look at how many board members and board candidates are actually brought, bring this up and using this to for or against the other board member or board candidates. So this is unfortunately to me, turning into a political thing. And for that reason, for that simple reason, not because I don't support or I do support Dr. Bragan, but for that simple reason, I will vote for table eight.
Thank you. Any other board comments?
Yeah.
Another one?
I have one more thing to say. If we're going to talk politics, if we're going to talk politics and what's really going on, I don't have to say any more than that. It's not me or Shivie or Carol that we're talking about with politics. I couldn't give a damn about politics. If you did the math, if you did the math, I've been in education for nearly 50 years, okay? I have cared about two things, the children and the staff. And those of you who know me know that's true. That's all I care about. And continuing Dr. Bragan's contract. And somebody said the other night too, that he's got to be worried about other things right now. Well, hell, if your contract is renewed and you know that you're going to be, then you have nothing to worry about. So that logic went by me altogether. This isn't about politics.
Any other board comments before I close it? Okay, thank you. Dr. Bragan, you want to say something?
I would love to. Thank you, Board President Erica, and thank you, board members, for all the support and for the community members. It's humbling to hear people say nice things about you. And, you know, I'm actually wearing up a little bit behind the mask here because I am from this side of town. I've been in this auditorium numbers of times for events, awards. Unfortunately for me, not for the National Honor Society, but I tried to make up for that in my collegiate career. But nonetheless, I'm grateful for all the comments that everyone has said on my behalf, and I'm really appreciative of it and extremely humbled by those comments. I wake up every day and I come to work. And I come to work because I want to make a difference. I'm 55 years old. I choose this job because I wanted it. I wanted to come to Edison. I grew up here. Went to school here. I was fortunate to teach here in this building, coached here. By the way, the only 11-0 state championship football team in this school's history. But nonetheless, was an administrator here, and I had the opportunity to come back and to lead this school. And that's all I want to do. I want to do it until either I'm not well enough to do it, or people no longer want me here, or maybe a little of both, who knows? The reason I asked for this extension was to show this community, every one of you and those that aren't here, I'm committed to Edison. As Ms. Maroni said so eloquently, I'm not a pretty boy, at least any longer, but I have no ambitions to go further in other state, other positions, or anything. And I asked if I could put this on the agenda to show the public, I'm committed to Edison Township. And the longest amount of commitment that we're allowed to put forth is five years. It's actually four years and 10 months because of the timing is outside of July. That's the only reason. I have no ulterior motives. I have no other things that I want to do except get up every day, come to work, and do the best I can for the children of Edison. And some people talked about strategic plans and my vision. My vision is simple, to do everything in my power for all the children under my charge, all 16,740 of them, to achieve their maximum potential. To have the specificity that was asked for by Mr. Shi, from the superintendent alone, is not only impractical, but inappropriate. I've worked with plans, long-range, seven-year strategic plans. They're developed with you, with stakeholders, community members, parents, teachers, educators, board members, not Bernie Bragan. That would be inappropriate, and we do it together. We look at our district, we compare ourselves to the metrics that are used to evaluate us and how we are being successful and areas that we can improve upon. And then we collectively come together and put a plan together to best mitigate those issues. It's not Bernie Bragan's plan. It's not the Board of Education's plan. It's the public school district's plan. And in order to facilitate that, it takes time, and there's no way around that. And I'm asking for the time because I'm committed to Edison. I'm committed to being here, getting up every day and coming here for no other reason than I love it. I love what I do. People ask me, you spend all that time, I think Joe Johnson said, you're emailing me at 3:00 in the morning, and I said something like, I have no life. That's not true. I have no other life other than this because this is what I'm passionate about. This is what I can do every day to make a difference in the world and maybe make this place a little better off when I leave it, and that's all I want. And I'm grateful and I'm humbled by the comments everybody made on my behalf. And I don't know what else to say, but thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan. All right, thank you. Now we're going to have roll call vote on double I, A through, hold on, F.
We have a motion.
We have a motion?
To table.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
I did.
Dr. Chen? Oh, you. Mr. Shi is making a motion to table E? Oh, no, F. I'm sorry, F, correct, Mr. Shi?
Correct.
Do we have a second to table? Dr. Chen? Okay, we need to have a vote on that. Item only, F only, to table. We need, we have a motion and a second. Roll call. Okay, this is the table. F. Mrs. Matiker?
No.
Mrs. Podolsky?
No.
Mrs. Conway?
I thought we abstained.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
No.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
I want to make a counter resolution if I could, but I don't know when it would be appropriate.
No, we have to vote on this first, I think. I believe, right? So, excuse me.
Can I do that?
Not.
Not now?
After.
Okay, so I'm voting yes to table for now.
Yes to table.
Yes to table?
It's not table.
Mr. Erica? No. All right, we have four yeses and four nos. So does it, does it, does it pass or no? No, it doesn't pass. So table, it did not pass the table. Okay, so I need a motion on A through F now. Motion? Mrs. Maroni? Mrs. Matiker? Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes to everything, but I have to abstain for F.
Dr. Chen?
Yes, except F.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes, except F.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes, no on F.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes and everything except I want to make a revision to F, but I don't know when to do that.
You have to.
You have to vote on this one first.
I have to vote on this one.
You already voted, yeah, you already started. So the vote has already, is already in process?
Can I do it after?
Okay, now, who we have to, I'm sorry, Dan.
So, okay, yes and everything except F.
You're going no on F?
Yeah, I vote no.
Okay. Mr. Erica? Yes. Okay, we have four yeses and four nos, so it doesn't, does not carry. Does not pass, okay. Okay, item, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I wanted to make a motion.
Mrs. Patel, go ahead.
I want to make a motion to amend what the resolution for the superintendent contract so that the term is not for two years, it's for a one-year extension that goes through July 1st, 2024.
Okay.
And the reason I'm proposing this, okay, so the reason I'm proposing this is because I do, I do hear what everyone is saying, but I do think that he just, maybe this one year that we lost during COVID is something we can give back to him as, it's a kind of like negotiation between what he's asking for and what we're willing to give. And to me, I think one year is reasonable, it's fair, and it's, it gives the board an opportunity, an opportunity to see how this next year plays out with COVID with giving him that, a surety that he's here for three and a half years instead of two and a half. I think a successful negotiation, which I think this is what this is, is where no one leaves the table happy. And I think one year is reasonable.
Okay, thank you.
So that's what I'm proposing.
So we have a motion on the floor to extend it to 2024? Is that correct? No, I have a second. Mrs. Maroni. Roll call. Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
I have to abstain. Boy, if you only knew.
Dr. Chen? Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Yes? Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Because I'm a happy customer. Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Erica? Yes. Okay. So the motion, just to let the public know what just happened, is now we, instead of doing a five-year deal, excuse me? Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. Before I say.
It should also be subject to the final approval of the county superintendent because it's already approved the five-year.
Yeah, just to let everyone know the process, we had to send the five-year deal to the county superintendent for approval. If he said no, we wouldn't be even discussing it. He did approve a five-year deal, but now we're amending it for Mrs. Patel's motion. So pending his approval, okay, Dr. Bragan's contract will now be extended through the year 2024 instead of 2025. So I just want to make sure the public understood that. Everyone's good? Okay. All right, item three, triple I, curriculum and instruction, curriculum guides, 2020, 2021 school year, motion. Mrs. Matiker and Mrs. Conway, roll call. Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Erica? Yes. All yes. Thank you. Item four, people, special services out of district placements, motion. Mrs. Maroni? Mrs. Conway? Roll call. Who is the second? Mrs. Conway. Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi? Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Erica? Yes. All yes. Finance, number five, A, B, and C. More discussion, comments? Motion? Mrs. Matiker and Mrs. Maroni. Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Erica? Yes. All yes. Okay, committee reports. We have one committee report. Okay, committee reports. We have one committee report. Mrs. Matiker, the Curriculum and Technology Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Erica. The Curriculum and Technology Committee met on Thursday, October 8th. The meeting started at 2:00. It took place via Zoom. In attendance were Dr. Bragan, Mrs. Palakowsky, Maninder Mahabir, Elizabeth Conway, Yuna Chen, Falguni Patel, and Shiviv Prasad Madhukar. The first item we discussed was hybrid schedule. The committee was presented three options for hybrid schedule. The change was recommended by a previous day meeting of a return-to-school parents committee. The committee agreed with the recommendation. It was discussed that if issues persisted, the committee would revisit the schedule for marking period two. The committee also discussed that prompt updates on parent portal was even more important during the pandemic, especially in regards to tests and quizzes. Further, the committee discussed the need for uniformity across similar classes in terms of time given to complete assessments. The committee also discussed the need for an optimal ratio between lessons and testing. Finally, the committee acknowledged difficulties in the review of test papers and quizzes by students because of remote setting. A decision was also made regarding PSAT for 10th grade. It will be administered to 10th graders in January 2021. Regarding technology update, we discussed that there has been further delay in the delivery of Chromebooks for elementary school. The committee also discussed the need to send out parent survey to get feedback on the administration of remote teaching. Other items discussed included policy regarding dropping a course in high school, three levels for middle school math, and placement criteria. No decisions were made. The meeting adjourned at 3:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from board members on the committee report? All right.
I do, I do.
I'm sorry, someone had a comment?
What courses are going to be dropped?
I'm sorry, who was, Mrs. Pang, I'm sorry.
What course are going to be dropped in high school?
Sorry?
The dropping a course in high school?
The committee discussed policy regarding dropping a course in high school.
So what was discussed?
We, there were issues where some students, if they wanted to drop a course in high school, they were not aware that it would reflect on their transcript, even if they drop it right at the beginning. And so we were just, and it obviously, you know, reflects badly for the colleges because it shows the course has dropped even though they might have met all the requirements for credit completion. So the committee just wanted to get some transparency feed on what the policy actually is.
So that sounds like a good suggestion. So the students, if they can drop after, like within a few weeks, right, after school starts, what's the, is there any objection for that?
I mean, the students can drop a course, that's not a problem, but it does show on their transcript that they dropped a course, and that does not look good to the college. So the committee was trying to figure if there was a way that if they drop within a, you know, certain period of time, it does not show on their transcript if they have met all the requirements for credit completion.
Okay. So can I ask why there's no decision made then?
It's a policy committee's job.
But it was discussed on the curriculum?
It was brought to attention in the curriculum committee.
Okay. And the three-level maths for middle school, I think we have been discussing that for a long time, right, since three years ago, when this was brought up, it was changed from three-level math to two-level math, and you were supporting that change at that time. So what is now being discussed?
I think, Shannon, it would be good if you don't make things political. The three-level math came in.
Why is this political? This is about math.
Because the three-level math was introduced from 2019 school year, and I was not on the board in 2019.
No, it was not. We discussed this in, before that, and we are on the curriculum.
I can, I can show you the board minutes. Let's, we can take it offline. I can show you the board minutes.
Any other comments? Thank you. Open comments?
Our committee report, I'm sorry. We're going to get the board comments after my announcements.
Okay, announcements. The upcoming meetings, on November 19th, which is a Thursday, we'll have our caucus meeting at JP Stevens High School at 7:00 PM, and then we'll have our public meeting on Tuesday, November 24th, at John P. Stevens High School at 7:00 PM. Those are my announcements. Okay, now? Now we'll have open board member comments. Anyone?
Get round.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yeah, needless to say, I'm thrilled that our kids are back in school, but I just wanted to mention that my daughter, who teaches in Piscataway, they are still remote, the teachers are in their building, and, but, but the kids are still out. My son-in-law has been hybrid since September, when school came back. So he's had students filtering in and out of the building. Last week, two of the kids at my son-in-law's school tested positive for COVID, and so one of them was my son-in-law, so he had to get tested for COVID, and he tested positive. He tested at CVS. Don't go to CVS for testing. What happened after that, then my daughter had to get tested, because now was she going to be able to go back in her building? So we all had to get tested. So we found a family practice where my daughter was tested, she was negative. The doctor said, bring your son, your husband in again, let's retest him. He was negative. Tom and I, negative. My point is that moving forward, there's going to be a lot of this kind of thing going on. Our teachers, our students, certainly our custodians, our secretaries, our nurses, everybody who is in the building really is somewhat at risk. So I just, I know Dr. Bragan will do the best for us, but everybody needs to stay calm and, and know that, you know, we all have, everyone who's in the buildings right now, their best interests at heart moving forward. It's a very, my point is, it's a very tough situation, much tougher than people really even realize.
Thank you, Mrs. Maroni. Anyone on this side? I'm sorry. Anyone down here want to? No, public? Okay, on this side now. I'm sorry, on this side now. Mr. Shi?
Yeah, so Dr. Bragan, you mentioned that starting this week, we're going to update the, the public if there's anything happening in our school regarding, regarding the part of, so we're going to be posted online, right?
Yes. Mr. Shi is referencing something we talked about as a board, that for full transparency sake, now that we have a lot more children that are back in the building, we're going to put weekly updates on our website for how many positive COVID cases that we have. As of right before this meeting, we didn't have any in the district so far, but I'm sure we'll get a few. And we want to keep track of the weekly trends, and hopefully they won't escalate and spike. But if things require us, there is always that option that we may have to go to remote should the, it escalate within the community, as some of our neighboring districts are experiencing right now. So, and as the board's suggestion, and we agree with it, was to put somewhat of a tracker on our homepage for a weekly update, so we can see where the trends are, hopefully do not continue to go up. But yes, that'll be on every Friday and be updated.
Yeah, that was one of the questions from the parents. Okay, so a couple of things I want to talk about. This is, I spoke with Fowe regarding the district policy of naming certain facilities or fields and so on. Because the reason I'm asking this, because, you know, the economy is not in the best shape. If we can attract more private funding into the school district, I actually have someone who's had interest, because we talked about the cricket field, right, $50,000 for the two pitches. Some of the, a couple of folks actually had expressed interest to sponsor those fields. So if they can sponsor those fields, the tax payer do not have to pay for it. Just wondering if we can have some kind of a naming for them in a field or something, you know, carved somewhere, so they can get some of their recognition for their contribution. So I just want to make sure that our policy accommodates that. And as far as, I spoke with them before that, for the policy, if we're going to name something, the person has to be dead. And I hope that that's not the case.
That's not true, yeah.
It's not true?
No.
Okay, that's good.
Because actually, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
The building next to the, I don't know, the building down the street here, the small building?
Yeah.
Where Mr. Hyville works, is actually named after Dr. Capraro.
Okay.
Who's a former superintendent, and I believe he's still alive.
Okay, that's fantastic. That's good to know.
That's heard.
That's good to know.
He didn't pay anything, but if we can get money, we'll take that.
The other thing is, when I was walking the neighborhood, I heard in the Woodbrook section, Woodbrook Corner section, one of the parents told me that he lives behind the school. Our lights are all on, all day on, okay, over the weekends. So this goes to, related to the Synergetic company that we hired to save our energy. You know, his concern is, I'm paying for these, you know, in the middle of the night, you know, while every classroom is on. I said, oh, maybe the hallway is on for whatever, but he tells me it's every class is on. So.
Do you know what school that is, Mr. Shi?
Woodbrook.
Woodbrook, okay.
Yeah. So can we look into that?
Absolutely.
And as far as the Synergetic goes, my understanding is the first year we're supposed to get a $250,000 saving, 250K saving, is that correct? For five-year, 1.5? I don't know exactly, whatever. I just know the total is 1.5 in five years. So how, where are we on this? Are we on track for the savings this year?
Yeah, I can't speak to the exact numbers at this point, but, you know, our energy specialist, Brian Calantoni, will make sure that he looks into the Woodbrook issue, because those are some of the behavioral changes that we can realize significant savings on without even implementing any changes in the mechanicals, which is the HVAC and things like that. I did ask them to give me an exact amount of savings that we have up to this point. So I don't want to misquote it, because I don't have the exact number, but I'll make sure we get it by the next board meeting.
Yeah, we'll get it next meeting or something.
Absolutely, absolutely. And just on the record, as of now, for Synergistic, we've not paid them a dime, except for the software that we needed for the BMS systems. And we don't pay them any money if we don't save any, any significant savings. Their fee is a proportion of our savings. So I have asked them for that information, because I did anticipate, you may actually have this question, Mr. Shi, I thought it might come up at the last meeting. But they're getting that. They had to run over the last couple of years of bills, they had to compile this stuff, and to quote the energy specialist, they're scrubbing the data right now. Whatever that means.
All right. So the other question is, a lot of requests from the community about the online verification for student residency. And I was told last year that, you know, the system's ready, it was before you came here. And then we shorted our resources, and now we hired a new, new person. So where are we on the online, a new verification for residency?
Yeah, that is falling under Mr. Benedict's department, and one of the new hires is Matt Yasco in that department as an attendance investigator. And one of his charges is to make sure we do that verification of the residencies. I understand that's in process, but I'll make sure we get a report out for the next meeting on where we are.
Okay, thank you. And today is the second day of school, and every time when the school opens, we have a lot of bus issues. You know, we are working on it, but the thing is, what I want to talk about is the GPS tracking. We had the system that was implemented last year, that was ready to go before the pandemic, and then the pandemic hits, and we're not moving forward with this, you know, during those periods. And now we're back in school. Can we start having parents using the software to, to, to track where these buses are, especially nowadays with less kids get on the bus, the schedule's off a little bit than before? Where are we on that? I know that the system's ready, the software's ready, everything's ready, and just want to know when the parents can get it in their hands, so they can track these buses.
It's a great question, Mr. Shi. And as you know, I think we brought up the last transportation committee meeting that we do have, it's, it's all ready to go. So I would imagine that Mr. Benedict's office oversees transportation, just wanted to get it up and running. As many of you know, the transportation contracts were awarded on Thursday, and the students were coming in on Monday, so there was a little bit of a transition. By the way, they did a great job, and people actually came in over the weekend to help facilitate that. Again, I'll report out at the next meeting. They should be ready to go, and now we have a lower number of students taking the buses daily. It might be a great time, it is a great time to pilot it.
Yeah, the pilot.
Mr. Shi, do we have a transportation committee?
We have, do we have a, you tell me. I think, I think we do.
Yeah, so again, if, who's, I don't, I have my notes in front of me. Who's the chair of the transportation?
Yeah, but that's the thing from the transportation committee, is to start using it.
Right.
And now everything's rolling, it's ready, and when can we just get to the handle of it?
I just want to make sure.
And the other question is about food service. And I think last year, when we had the committee, we decided that this year, this, this current school year, we don't have enough time to bid the food services. But for the next school year, we should bid. And right now, we're in October. Just want to find out where we are. And also, you know, for our food service vendor, Chawwells has been in the district for almost 30 years. When I went to Atlantic City and to the convention, and spoke to some of the food service vendors, they told me that the way that our contract is written, they could not bid, because there's a half million dollar in a contract by the food vendor, they have to improve our school facility $100,000 a year, five years, half million dollars. But the reality is, that money is our money. So I don't know how the contract is written, because I told them that's, you know, why can't you bid on it? He goes, you should look at your contract. So I hope this, when we go out and bid, and the contract, the bid should be fair, the spec should be fair, so we can allow other vendors to come in and bid on it. And I'm not saying Chawwells is bad, but they have been in the district for 30 years. Let's see if we can get some competition in here. And as far as I know, that our participation rate on the lunch program is not that high, it's probably less than 50%. I want to see the participation rate go up, and of course, the choices of the menus and so on.
I know Mr. Shi and I have spoken about this.
Yes.
A couple of times. We actually visited vendors down in Atlantic City two years ago.
Correct.
We were going to go out for an RFP last year, but again, the pandemic hit in March. So I have a question to Dan, if, when we go out for RFP for a food service, when do we go outside?
No, we said this, this current, this year, we're not bidding, it's for the next school.
Following the school year, yeah.
Yeah.
When we, when we have to put out the RFP?
Yeah, yeah.
Dan, when we have to put out an RFP?
We can put it out anytime.
Anytime, okay. So I think Carol, you're the food service chair?
I'm the chair of anything, because I'm.
What? Oh, I'm sorry.
Jerry is the chair.
Oh, Jerry's the chair. So if we can get the detailed contract, Dan, to Jerry of Chawwells, and.
I don't, I don't need to see the contract. Dan's the expert on that, but I just want to make sure that whatever the vendor told us, you were there?
Yes.
That we don't have that in the clause, so they can, they can bid it. It's a fair request, so they, other people, I don't want them to say, hey, you know, I can't bid on it.
Right. So if you could, Jerry, if you could, I'm sorry, Mr. Shi, if you could get a meeting together and have the committee agree, we should go out for an RFP, it'll get done.
And the last item is related to what I mentioned, the long-term, you know, plan, and I brought this up again at the last meeting, is our solar project. Right, right now in the budget, we spent $3 million, a little over $3 million on utility. And looking at that, you know, what's the plan for the next year for roofing and stuff, it's going to also cost quite some money. So can we put up together this solar plan with our long-term plan? And also the, you know, I got a list from Mr. Kalabak about the parking lot that needs to be paved. There are a lot of parking, high schools are on the top list, and it's going to cost us a lot of money. So if we have a long-term plan to, to build or whatever, we should not be paving these parking lots in two years, two years down the road, we're going to rip them off, rip them up again.
Right.
So that's why, you know, all these things need to be together, so we can, we can, you know, use these resources efficiently.
I agree. Mrs. Conway, we'll have a finance facilities meeting within the next couple of weeks, and we can talk about.
Yes.
Solar, paving, and any other projects that any board members have, please forward them to Mrs. Conway, the chair. Yes, Shiviv?
No, no.
I'm sorry, Mr. Shi, you done?
I'm done.
No, just wanted to just make, just one comment. I just wanted to clarify for folks who are here and folks who are watching remotely, the process that is typically followed in any Board of Education decision. any Board of Education decision. So now the Board of Ed has many committees, committees like Community Relations, Curriculum and Technology, Facilities and Finance, Policy, Personnel, and so on and so forth. And each committee has four members each. And anything that's discussed regarding that particular topic goes through the committee. The administration proposes various things, and then the committee sits and discusses things, talks about the pros and cons and things like that. And once the committee processes the information, that information is put out to the full board. So any decision that is made, whether it is by transportation committee, or whether it's by curriculum committee, or whether it is by the special needs committee, every board member at some point in time gets a chance to weigh in, to support it, to reject it, or any sort of thing. And the power of the chair of a committee is basically to put things on the agenda, to set up a meeting, and prepare committee minutes. The chair does not have the power alone to make any decision. The decision lies, the first step for the decision is at the committee level. And before it gets to the people, the decision lies with the full board. So I just wanted to clarify that. And I also had one request for Dr. Bragan and Ralph. I frequently get questions from parents, like who's serving on which committee, so that they know which board member to reach out to. So if we can have that information posted on our website, you know, where we have Board of Education information.
Just like the Edison Township post, the zoning board, planning board.
Yeah, so if we can have, you know, the names of the committee and all the committee, the board of members serving on the committee with, with whatever contact information that you can put out there. And also, if you can have, you know, the email of the chair, so that if anybody has concerns or questions or, or suggestions, they can email the chair, and the chair can put it on the agenda for the next committee. So that way, we can at least get the public participation in the decisions we make, because, you know, we might not know all the issues that's going on. And that way, people will have a point person to reach out to. So if we can have that, that would be awesome.
Great.
Thank you.
And just to add one more piece to that puzzle, on each committee, there's always an administrator there. Dr. Bragan attends most of the meetings. But if it's curriculum, it's our, you know, assistant supes. If it's special needs, it's Dr. Conklin, whoever it may be. And they have a very integral part of those committees too, because again, we don't know every detail that's going on in the district, or about curriculum, or about facilities. So just to let everyone know.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have, like, we're not like administrators. We just kind of, you know, ask the good questions and.
Yep, and bring the questions from the public.
And bring the problems. And then, you know, for any decision, we try to question the decision and try to figure out, you know, and then we support it or don't support it. That's what we do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else down this end?
November 16th to the 20th is the 99th Annual American Education Week. Public education was established at the birth of our nation in an effort to better prepare children to become adults who are effective members of society and also good citizens of the country. It is a work in progress, and it does take a village to educate a child. The better we do that, the better our country's future will be. So usually, American Education Week, we invite all the parents to come in and see what goes on in the school. And in our current situation, I don't think that would happen. However, it was great tonight seeing so many people in the audience and contributing to our discussion, that we do have board meetings on November 19th and 24th, which is around that time. They are at the other high school in town. But we would love to see you all there then. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Conway?
I just wanted to say that starting today was the New Jersey School Boards Association Convention. And I sat in my laundry room, watching on the computer. And there's a lot of information on there. And I suggest the board members take advantage. It is good for one year, watching the different sessions. But from the ones that I saw already today, I was able to take notes, and there was a lot of really good information on it. So we're always learning, and we're always reaching out to everyone in the state of New Jersey for even more education.
Is there any way to forward those videos, or no? You can't do that?
No, you can, well, they'll be there for a year.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Just in addition, just because I happen to be on the New Jersey Education Leadership Foundation Board. So you didn't come visit me today in the chatroom. But not only are they up for a year, but to the extent there's new content, the vendors and the, and the panelists are able to add content all throughout the year. So if something happens, there's a new statute or something, they'll be able to add it also.
What, were you a vendor?
Uh, no, it's the Education Leadership Foundation Board.
I didn't pick you.
It funds, it funds the, no, you didn't. It actually, it's the, it's the, it funds, it actually funds all of, it actually funds all of the community, all of the county off, county meetings.
No, I took the list, and each hour, there was like four or five things chosen to pick from.
Oh, yeah.
And.
It's actually a nonprofit of school boards, so it's not a, it's not a vendor.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right. I just, a couple of comments. One, I'm glad we're back to school. It sounds like we're back safely. We had some, obviously, some busing issues, and I know they're working hard. I know Dr. Bragan spoke to me over the weekend and said that he had a staff in over the weekend, the busing, transportation staff, trying to solve as many issues as they can. You know, in the past, we've always had some minor glitches on opening day, even in a normal year, and this is far from a normal year. So I know they're working hard to get those done. I've attended a few football games and soccer games so far, Mrs. Conway. I met a few. Kids are playing sports, which is great to see, that they're outside. I know there's limits on the amount of people that could be at the games. And I know the two ADs are doing a fabulous job, you know, getting that done and making sure they make announcements like every timeout, that they should socially distance and wear a mask. Hopefully, the teams, the parents, the band are all complying with that, because it's for their own safety and for the good. I know the kids want to be back in school, but if we have an outbreak, we're going to be back to full remote, and I know no one wants that. So I just wanted to make those announcements. Thank you. Open public comments on anything you would like. Mr. Craiglow?
Thank you.
Oh, you got notes today?
Yeah, I got a little paper.
Ernest Craiglow, Edison, New Jersey. Thank you, board members, Mr. Mashad and Dr. Bragan, for your dedication to Edison's Public Schools. Firstly, I would like to wish my daughter Casey a happy birthday. I had to do that.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Everyone give. How old?
The big one, seven.
Ooh.
And thank God she passed her driver's test.
There you go. Good luck with that, by the way.
It would have been bad. I believe we all would agree that the Board of Education and the superintendent should be working together as a team to achieve what's best for our students and staff, and that members of the Board of Education and Dr. Bragan are listening to the concerns of parents, students, and teachers, and using that information and feedback to develop objectives and goals for the district. I have sat in previous board meetings and observed many members of the public compliment Dr. Bragan on his quick responses to their phone calls and their emails. Especially during the period of COVID-19, it is even more pertinent to address the safety and concerns of parents and staff as quickly as we possibly can. So with that being said, Mr. Shi, I ask you, why do you wait and put off asking Dr. Bragan a long list of questions and parent concerns until the public portion of the board meetings? When addressing these issues immediately with Dr. Bragan would be in the best interest of the students, parents, and staff?
We're not going to, we're not going to go back and forth.
Well, I don't want to go back and forth. I'm just saying.
You could ask the questions, but.
That's a concern of a parent. And I think if you guys are communicating, and we're not waiting till public comments to ask questions, we can address them quickly.
I could tell you that Mr. Shi has many questions and concerns about the district and the well-being of the district. He, I see the emails. He CCs me on every email that he sends to Dr. Bragan. So the board president and vice president are CC'd, and his concerns are addressed by Dr. Bragan. Some of those.
But why wait till now?
Well, some, some concerns you may not think of until you get here. They're legitimate concerns, they're legitimate questions.
Five, 10, 15 questions?
He had about five tonight. So some board members rather communicate with Dr. Bragan directly.
All right. So all I'm going to say, it's the best interest of the parents and the students and the teachers. Just reach out to Dr. Bragan and ask him, rather than doing it here for maybe, you know, political advancement.
No, no, I wouldn't. President, can I?
Hold on.
Then I'll make the, then I apologize.
Are you, are you done with your questions?
Mr. Craiglow?
Well, I just don't see anybody else doing that.
No, I understand. He'll answer you. But are you done, so we don't go back and forth?
Are you done with the question? I'll respond.
Yes, go ahead. I'd like to hear your answer.
Okay.
So there are a lot of questions that's the concern from the public. So a lot, sometimes I want Dr. Bragan to answer so public can hear it. Okay? The example of transportation, the example of online verification, okay? The example of bidding for food. All the, the public has been asking these questions. I can get an answer. Actually, the question I asked last time, I haven't answered a lot of them. Okay? But I want Dr. Bragan to say it so the public understands. That's the reason for it. Okay?
So this is just now, so you've already asked these questions previously. This is just to let the public know you're asking them?
The questions are from the public. They want to know the answers. I want Dr. Bragan to answer so public understand.
All right. So then I apologize, because I'm under the impression that you're waiting till now to ask these questions for the first time.
The question has been asked for a long time, for, for online verifi, that's, that's how, excuse me, sir. That's when the, the, in a public meeting is when the people can hear from our administrations. Okay? Board members are just our own opinions. But at the end of the day, it's an administration who comes in and implements these stuff. Okay? So I tell them, hey, yeah, the online registration is ready, our verification is ready. But they're saying, where is it? So that's why I asked Dr. Bragan the question. Right? And as far as, you know, I said, I read those questions at the last meeting, the 15 questions are all from the parents. You were in the group, actually, all of these questions were asked. You were in the WhatsApp group, we were in it. Okay?
But I'm not, I'm not arguing.
No, 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 no.
I'm just saying, why wait till here?
No, well, that's why the parents asked me to answer those questions, so they can hear. You, you were in the same group. You saw those questions were presented to me. If you ask those questions, I will not be answered, I will not ask them. So that's what, that's what the reasons are.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Craiglow. Any, sir? Right here. Yes, you.
Thank you so much.
Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Ritesh Moody, and address is 21 Frost Avenue West, Edison. Thank you. So I wanted to thank all the board members for, you know, dealing this very, like, there was a contention issue, and you guys handled it very nicely. And the resolution is midway. And I thank Mr. Shi, because he brings all the problems which we face. And it could, I mean, because board member work, but we don't know who's working or not. So I thank you, Mr. Shi, for letting us know what's going on. And another question, I had one question, actually, about the rating. Our school district rating is going, going down. So what we doing about that? And any concrete answer, we really appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. Dr. Bragan?
Yeah, that's a long-term solution. And actually, the ratings, I'm not sure what metric that was, or what vehicle that came up in. But it was brought up at the curriculum committee, and we're going to look at those. And it's a focus of our next board meeting. I'm sorry, curriculum committee meeting, to take a look at those metrics and see what we can do to mitigate those scores.
Anyone else? Sir, following in the back.
Thank you, Maria, for cleaning this. I would just like to extend, oh, sorry, Yash Pandya, 20 Arbor Circle. I would just like to extend the kudos which I gave to Dr. Bragan, our president, Ralph Arico, and the rest of the board members, to all teachers and all our support staff on site in these schools, including custodians, our paraprofessionals, for doing a great job and for being together and working together to make sure that our schools are started up again. The other point I'd like to make is, we have a trunk or treat happening this weekend on October 24th, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. It's hosted by the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 435. So I'd like to urge and request if everyone can join. And I think everyone can use some time. Halloween is around the corner. So we can get together with our kids and as a community, and round up together. That is all. Thank you. Have a good evening.
A quick question. Do we bring treats? Or are we allowed to bring treats? And do you have an address?
The address is 43 Oakland Avenue in Edison. That's 43 Oakland Avenue.
Okay.
Treats, I am not too sure.
Okay, so maybe we'll check the website. I think I've seen it on Facebook.
Yeah, it's a, it's a poster. It's on our Edison residency.
Yes, I've seen that. Okay, we'll check it out.
I don't know if everyone can see it here, but.
Thank you, Mr. Pandya.
There's food provided here, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
All right. Miss, I'm sorry, Mr. Brunner. Thank you for cleaning that off for Mr. Brunner.
No problem. I just want.
You can take your hat back.
I just want to thank everybody. Bill Brunner, Bill Brunner, 215 Lowering Avenue. I want to thank everybody for their kind remarks on my wife's passing. And thank you very much for the moment of silence last Thursday. I appreciate that very much. It's been a tough few months. I'd like to ask Dan a question through the chair.
Absolutely.
With the new budget, Dan, what's the tax increase, on the school tax increase going to be, if any?
For next year?
Yeah, this coming up, coming up, this coming tax year.
Well, we haven't put the budget together yet.
But let me rephrase that then. Do you anticipate a zero tax increase, or with the teacher settlement and a few other settlements, do you anticipate a small tax increase?
Well, a lot of it has to do with the state aid we're going to get. We're hoping that we're going to even get frozen. If the state cuts our state aid, that's going to increase, because then we have to pass more on to the local taxpayers. But I will be budgeting, obviously, for the salary increases and the increases in insurance and all the other increases we have. So it has to come from somewhere. So if, if we're not, if we're going to go with zero, I got to take it from somewhere else. So something's got to go.
So it's possible we could have a tax increase.
If you want to cut some programs or staff, things like that.
I don't, I don't want to pin you down, Dan. It, it sounds like we might have a slight increase. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brunner. And again, everyone is. You get to clean your own.
Maria Orgit, 83 Jefferson. Yes, Halloween is going to go on. They, so far, the governor's orders was as long as it's not a common bowl that the children pick out of. So I was thinking, I was going to make like little brown bags and stuff with stickers, put candies in it, and put it out a table. So there's no particular time for Halloween. I guess it's all day. And also, the township was doing a sweepstakes to see which one is the scariest house. So I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Halloween.
Thank you very much. Mr. DePescual?
Maria, where are you putting these bags? By your house?
Tony DePescual, 2 Pine Street. So I just wanted to say that, you know, the vote on Dr. Bragan's contract, I thought was a very good, positive step forward for the board in the sense that you guys were able to basically work together on, you know, Fowl came up with a negotiation, if you want to call it. You know, we don't only, we don't always get what we want, you know? But when we work together, we can get something that will help the district and the kids. And I think this is something that we need to continue to do, as you guys need to continue to do as a board. to do as a board. If it's tough, because you know that some people are not gonna be happy with you for what you did, you know what? Sometimes it just doesn't matter. You need to stand up for what you believe, and that's what you need to go with. So I just want to thank every one of you for being a part of, I think, which was, you know, I said, a step forward in, in the board's decision. And, you know, either way, if you agree with it or not, I just think as a collective group, I just think you should all, you know, be proud of yourselves that, you know, that you were able to work together and come up with a solution. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson? Still celebrating his birthday, I'm sure? You must have a clean room at home. And you can take your mask off.
Joseph Johnson, 407 Durham Avenue. First and foremost, congratulations, as we previously mentioned before, to our official return to school. I hope that we're able to continue moving forward with all of our reopening procedures and guidelines. As we know, as Dr. Bregan continues to reiterate, the virus ultimately dictates the outcome, but we are on the right track, and let's continue to keep doing what we're doing. And so next, a big shout-out to our Edison High School football team. They won their second straight game last week. It was a 24-7 victory against New Brunswick. So they have North Brunswick coming up this Friday, so if anyone's interested in going, I know there's only a limited amount of seats, but if you're down, I might come. And lastly, just to touch upon what Mr. De Pasquale said, I'm happy that we're able to settle the contract dispute and the contract negotiations. We look forward to the next steps that Edison Township has, Board Member Conway was saying, you know, the direction and the next steps that the township will take in terms of the students, the staff, and the administration. So good luck to all of the board members, all of the administration, all of the students and parents for this upcoming year, as well as the upcoming candidates during our elections. So thank you, guys, and stay blessed.
Mr. Johnson, a quick question I have for you. I have a quick question for you. Any updates on the Lena Harris Foundation? Anything being done on Zoom or?
That's a good question. We're still figuring that out now.
Okay, keep us posted, I know you will.
Yeah, yeah, it's a couple months away, because it's usually in February. So we have a couple of times to figure some things out. So if we're able to do something in the building now, it'd be great. If not, we can always adjust and go online or do something, you know, outside or socially distant.
All right, great, please keep us posted.
Okay, thank you. Have a good day.
Anyone else? Mr. Ross? Mr. Edison Eagle?
One minute, one minute.
That's who they named it after him?
You guys hear me good enough?
Yes.
Thank you. First off, I just want to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Bregan, the central office staff, on helping us to allow to get into the hybrid. Just fantastic to see kids back in the building. Also, it's fantastic to have Board of Education's meetings back in the building. And, you know, I look forward to the time when we can get even more people out here and we can get the kids out. And one of my big reasons for coming out here today, of course, congratulations to Dr. Bregan, but tonight, in our senior night, we have Ms. Samantha Moxie, who scored her 99th, 100th, 101st, and 102nd goal in the 62 drubbing of Sayerville. And she is one of only, she is the all-time leading scorer in Edison High School history in soccer, and is also one of only three active players in the state that has reached the century mark. So, you know, I can't let a meeting go by and a television camera without saying what's great about Edison High School, and today, it's Sam Moxie and 100 goals.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Anyone else? I'm sorry, Mr. Baker, I happen to miss Mr. Baker. Would never miss Mr. Baker.
I was gonna say this for the last, but I just wanted, Mr. Ross, I feel like every meeting I go to
He's back there.
He's back there. Good, because that was gonna be really weird, what I was about to say. I feel like I always see Mr. Ross, and I think that, one, thank you, sir, for always showing up, whether it's at your building or not. But, two, I just, we might disagree with how we came to decisions tonight. What I'm taking away is that this district is in good hands, that there are leaders who care about our kids, that there are staff members who care about our teachers, who care about our kids. Dr. Bregan, I think your statement of commitment to this town is tangible, it's been seen, it will continue to be seen, and I appreciate you, I appreciate the show of support from countless other leaders who show up to these meetings and conversations, and just the joy and celebration that exists. I just wanted to say that, like, I'm feeling good tonight. Did a little Googling today, I know there's a lot of concern about some ratings that have dropped on a website called Great Schools. And it turns out, Great Schools actually changed their survey methodology in September 2020. And so that methodology added in categories of student progress and college readiness. And so I know that we're all worried about drops in ratings. I live half a mile away from a school that has experienced a drop in rating, but I'm confident in this board and administration's ability to analyze that methodology, what has changed, create a long-term plan, and address it. And so I just want to encourage those who are worried about schools that have dropped in ratings, there's a reason. The ratings dropped, the ratings changed, the methodology itself changed. Michigan and California were the pilot districts or pilot states two years ago, and so Great Schools released that methodology nationwide in the middle of a national pandemic, who knows why. But alas, we're there. So it's a new methodology, and so really, just please, 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 don't worry too much about those. I really appreciate the ask for, for members of the committee to be posted on the website. And we'd just like to also, through the, through the chair, Superintendent and Dan, not sure if it's possible, but could we also split out the committee reports? Because I find myself sometimes, like, just wondering, like, are there finance, like, when was finance discussed? When was facilities discussed? And while I love reading the minutes every month, I would like to just be like, hey, facilities was discussed this month, let me hit it up. And so, you know, I was kind of thinking, like, once the minutes are approved, just kind of like, here's the full suite of it, including the committee reports, but then, like, individually broken out. I was just about to kind of make those committee reports, key committees, food service, transportation, curriculum, all of them, accessible to all. So just some thoughts there. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Amy Ryan from Edison. I wanted to first take a moment to thank Dr. Bregan and thank the board for civil discourse tonight. It was actually quite interesting to follow along and see how everything turned out. I'd also like to thank all of the district administrators, and especially the Special Services Department, who's been helping support some of the students who have been going through maybe more difficult times getting through the podium startup with the remote learning classes. And I think it's been going really well for a lot of the students, and I appreciate especially Dr. Bregan's support and the board members as well. Just as a follow-up to my previous questions at other board meetings, curious if the road back has been signed off by the state yet? Has Edison's plan been approved?
I'm sorry, I'll let you finish your questions.
That's it. Easy one tonight.
It has not.
Oh, my gosh. Any ideas when it might come through? Do they give you any clues?
You know, we've talked about it at our county roundtable meetings, and we've not received approval on many of those things. So, you know, we were kind of told, proceed, and that'll follow.
Okay.
We'll see.
Keep going.
Just to give you an update today, the governor announced his nomination or recommendation for the new educational, education commissioner for the state.
Oh, interesting.
So hopefully, once she gets approved, things will move a little quicker. Right now, they really have no one in charge down there, so.
Explains a lot.
All right, thank you.
Great, thanks so much.
Anyone else? First time speakers first, before, all right, sir?
Hi, this is Ritesh Modi. Sorry, and thank you for giving me another chance. I just wanted to know, like, we had Zoom meetings, and the participation was high, because a lot of people cannot come here and talk in person. So it's something you can, board can think about it, so that you get more opinion, so people can actually dial in and share their concerns, because a lot of people are not able to come here in person. They work, they have childs. So something which worked, if you can extend it, it would be really great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and again, what I'll say to that is, like Mr. Shi said, he gets a lot of questions. Board members get questions all the time. If parents have any questions, they can individually email a board member or Dr. Bregan directly, you know? Again, past superintendents wouldn't answer emails. Dr. Bregan answers every email. So if there's concerns, and they can't make a meeting, and they have a concern, you know, contact one of the board members, like Mr. Shi spoke about today. There was a bunch of questions on the WhatsApp group, which I'm not a part of, but, you know, if there's questions, they need to be answered in the public, so the public could hear it, and hopefully watch this program over and over again until the November meeting. So, all right. Nothing, anyone else? Okay, motion to adjourn. Mrs. Conway and Mr. Shi. All in favor?
Hi.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.